Chris White?
Here.
From the Woodhorns here, Mayor Barum.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge allegiance. I will lead us in invocation. Please bow your heads as we pray. Heavenly Father, we adore you, we bless you, and we glorify you. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask you, dear Lord, to look favorably upon our meeting this evening. Help us to discern the needs of our community. Give us the strength and the courage to debate our concerns and issues in a peaceful and caring manner. Guide us in our deliberations and make them beneficial to all those you have entrusted in our care. May all our works give you honor and our lives proclaim your goodness. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, I need a motion to approve the April 16th, 2022 regular board meeting minutes.
One second.
Any discussion on that? Item? Roll call, please.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm requesting, I need a motion to approve an appointment resolution appointing Kevin Canaby as a village treasurer.
One second.
And a discussion. I'm requesting the appointment of Kevin Canaby to the position of village treasurer. Kevin is an experienced CPA with 36 years of experience as a financial auditor in several Lake County communities. Kevin currently serves as treasurer with the village of Green Oaks and the city of Park City. Kevin is also a resident of Wintah Harbor since 1998. I appreciate his willingness to serve his community, just like I appreciate the public service of everyone on this board. Does anyone have any questions for Kevin?
I'm over here.
Thirty-six years. You're only older than 36, right?
That's right.
All right. So, being that, no questions. I just need, you've got a motion, a second, and just need a roll call.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to approve a finding resolution appointing Jason Garrel as a part-time police officer.
One second.
I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
Yeah, we're extremely pleased to have Jason join us. Jason's a 20-year veteran of the North Chicago Police Department, about a year and a half over at Antioch, and he comes to us part-time and has already been through the orientation training program and has started working, and a fantastic addition to our crew.
How many years has he been a police officer?
He's 22, 20 years at North Chicago and another year plus at Antioch.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. His resume is unbelievably lengthy.
Finally, his career has arrived.
Yes. He's a happy man. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item, a resolution, I need a motion to approve a resolution congratulating Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps for their accomplishments in Eindhoven, the Netherlands.
One second.
I'm going to read the resolution. The resolution congratulating Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps for their accomplishments at the World Paton Trolling Championship in Eindhoven, the Netherlands. Whereas, paton trolling is a sport involving the manipulation of a metal rod with the hands and body to a coordinated routine. Competitive paton trolling encompasses the manipulation of a metal rod, baton, and the performer's body to a coordinated program of skill sets and music. Whereas, Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps was founded in 1976, and whereas, Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps team is from Zion and the surrounding communities, Wintah Harbor being one of these communities. And whereas, athletic competition helps to enhance both the moral and physical development of young athletes, preparing them for the future by instilling in them the importance of teamwork, encouraging the standard of healthy living, and developing a sense of fair play and competition. And whereas, the hard work and dedication of the Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps and coaching staff led them to compete at the World Paton Trolling Championships in Eindhoven, the Netherlands, in July of 2022. And whereas, with fierce competition on a world level, Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps competed as a Team USA, as Team USA trolling finished in first place in the parade in the parade corpse division with 588.8 points, with the Team Netherlands second at 579.6, Team Norway third, and Team England fourth at the World Paton Trolling Championships on July 28th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the village board of the village of Wintah Harbor, Illinois. Resolved, individual and team championships are highly sought after in youth sports. The mayor and village board commends rare athletic achievements and pays special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples for the youth of this great region of Illinois. Further resolved, the mayor and village board are proud to congratulate Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps team and coaching staff on their phenomenal performance at the World Paton Trolling Championships, passed by the board of trustees of the village of Wintah Harbor, Illinois, on the 20th day of September of 2022. Congratulations. I present this to Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to congratulate the team and the coaching staff with this great achievement. Thanks to all your teamwork, hard work, and dedication. This is the second meeting in a row that we've had a great pleasure probably enlightening the accomplishments of our youth.
All right. I would like to ask the coach if you'd like to say anything about the competition.
Well, we were in Netherlands for a week, and then we ended up heading to Paris for a few days. And I want to tell you that what was so exciting is, you know, you never know how things are going to end up, but, and at the World Championships, they do the judging differently, and they announce the scores, the raw scores, right after you come off the floor. And, you know, it's just like when you're watching the Olympics, but, you know, certain countries, like, are going to give their country more points. Well, the Netherlands judge gave the Netherlands Corps quite a big gap and put us in third place. So that really hurt our score. And so, even though they posted the scores, they were just the raw scores before penalties. So, I prepared the girls, you know, and they weren't going to tell us the official scores until the final, until the closing ceremony. So I, you know, told the girls, we have one guy on our team. I said, prepare yourself for second place. You know, you did the best you can, but the way Dawn and I had figured, I didn't know that we could catch up with penalties. But I'm going to tell you, this group of girls and Joel on the floor at the World Championships only had a penalty of .4, which we have never had that few of penalties. And the other groups, the Netherlands, had a lot more penalties. So we caught up with them in penalties. So what was so exciting is, we thought for three days, we competed on Thursday, and the final, the closing ceremonies were on Sunday night. But for three days, we were prepared. I gave them a big lecture before we walked in, you know, just be good sports, you did your best, that's all that counts, and left in the judges' hands. And so, I, in my dreams, I never, you know, would imagine this, but I'm going to tell you that I did not hear first place, USA. All I heard was in second place, the Netherlands, and then we went crazy. So, every video the parents have, every single video of the closing ceremonies, I think I've only heard one where they start to play the National Anthem and they announce us as the winners. Because every, you know, all I hear in my sleep coming home, I just kept hearing second place, Netherlands. So I just want to say, it's because, you know, when you go and you give it your all, it doesn't matter what the outcome is. If you come off the floor knowing you did your best, that's all we ask. I can't control what the judges do, I can't control what other groups do. But this group of girls was phenomenal on the floor. So that's how come they're gold winners. So we're so proud of them. And even though we are a program with Wintah Harbor, I want to say that the majority of the girls live in Wintah Harbor. They all came out of the Westfield, the town club, this group of them. So maybe girls, I have girls from all different areas here, but I just want to say, these are the girls who have been trolling together since kindergarten, and that's why they're so good. They're so dedicated. And I'm just going to tell you, come on, I want to tell you something now, and when they leave, it's going to be sad, and we're going to be starting our program all over. But I couldn't have a better group of girls. So thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you the whole story.
It amazes me, and I think I said this over at the site, I love the video you had, and I actually did hear USA, but imagine, and when you were there, you probably didn't hear it, but that video was, but that's way phenomenal. That was wonderful. Glad that you played it, that had you best.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you gave all the girls a copy of that, correct?
Yeah.
But what amazes me most is the travel. I mean, jet lag. I mean, everyone had to experience it, but they still were able to focus on what they had to do and nailed their routine. It was amazing.
Yeah, they did their best performance on the floor.
Yeah. I mean, it was.
Under a lot of pressure.
Yeah. But I have to say, they had great coaches.
Thank you.
You got to say thanks to your parents, too.
Yes.
No, because they do all the events. We, we always try to go to all of them. You do dinners, you do fundraisers, you do a lot of stuff, and it takes a lot because there's dedication where you got to go down those because it's harder, doesn't it? There's a lot involved in it. My kids do different sports, but it's a lot to do, and it's every day of doing it, plus going to school and getting good school grades, too, so it's a good accomplishment.
We have a great group of parents.
Parents are amazing.
And it's a huge financial expense to go, and I just want to say that, you know, we fundraised and we told everybody this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but when we were there and just recently in 2022, that, those World Championships were supposed to happen in 2020, but they were canceled two years because of COVID. So now the next World Championships is happening next August in Liverpool, England, and this group of girls qualified in two events. So we are heading to Liverpool, England. But fair enough, Mike, we're starting, we've already started fundraising. We're starting all over. It is still a once-in-a-lifetime, we thought it was a once-in-a-lifetime. So we have to go back to different sponsors, and that kind of our phrase, so we have to come up with something else, okay?
Do you have thoughts on any fundraising that you may have?
Yes, we're starting all over.
Now, I would like to present a mayor proclamation to each of the team members. So when I call your name, I'm going to read the proclamation once, but I'll call the team individually. I try to do it alphabetically. I had to take some out because some of the girls are not here today. Actually, I think that says exactly what the resolution says, does it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm just going to call up the names, but I'll read the first one. Congratulating Elena Anne Chiamal of the Razzle Dazzle Paton Trolling Corps for her accomplishment at the World Paton Trolling Championship in Eindhoven, the Netherlands. Now, we're going to do a team picture. Can you say that's the media what it's going to take? Right, that's somebody else. Then congratulating Alyssa Lynn Gonzalez. I sure listened when you did the names at the site, but it sounds like. And Maggie Mae Ruth McCarthy. I happen to keep this person's back straight. Did I miss anybody?
Me or Debbie? Can I have a quick group photo?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
With the board, sorry, push on, it's long.
Half on, one, half on.
I think we need the police and the fire department there, too.
Oh, sorry, Tim. Come on.
We'll do the common Iraqi.
I'm going to let the parents play.
Thanks, Ed.
Just taking the pictures.
I'll be looking at different ways.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just like, just like in Eindhoven. They have to wait a couple days.
Marabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Move on to the next item. Resolution ratifying the police union contracts. I need a motion, let me read this, because I want to make sure I get this. Resolution approving the police patrol officers and police sergeant contracts. Both labor agreements expired in 2020. We appreciate both collective bargaining units working with us to draft these agreements, which I believe are fair for our staff and the village. Highlights of the financial benefits for both police officers and sergeants. $3,500 immediate salary increase as an equity adjustment in lieu of retroactive pay. 2.5% wage increase in the first year of the contract. And then $3,500 salary increase as an equity adjustment in lieu of a retroactive pay for the second year, and 3% wage increase in the second year of the contract. And I'm going to ask the chief, do you have any comments on this agreement?
No, just that I thought it went very smoothly. Both sides were very amicable each, and I think through all the dedication and hard work and sacrifice that the officers have made over the last two or three years, really paid off for them, and I think it's a great step forward to try to bring their pay in line with, you know, the competitors that keep stealing them from us. So thank you very much for.
I would like to say, chief, thank you for going back to the police officers with, and kind of being the mediator between us and them, so appreciate that.
No, it's my pleasure, sir.
I would like to ask for two amendments to this resolution. Add the $3,500 salary increase as an equity adjustment in lieu of retroactive pay for the second year to be added to section four of the resolution, which was agreed on because it was left out. And I also would like to, also like in the motion to authorize the final wage scale to be finalized and inserted into the agreement by the village administrator and village attorney using the parameter in section four of the resolution. And this will be fully ratified at our next month's meeting. So with those changes, I need a motion to approve the police contract.
One second.
Any other discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to monthly financial report. Could you move that podium back to the center seat? Oh, thank you, Marabella. And now I'll call on Nick Nardich. Finance.
Wait till you hear what I have to say before you.
I say, Nick is doing an amazing job. I mean, every time he's here, he always brings me up to speed as to what's going on, where he's at, what he's doing, so.
I'm drawing over this report with some of you, I'm just going to go over it briefly. As I said, this is the main report, this is the first report that we get. Had to make some changes in our accounting system in order to produce this report, both on the input side and on the ledger itself. And again, as I mentioned, Julie and Deb and Karen have been very, very helpful for all of us together. Couldn't have done it without them. But again, this report will expand as we get some of the months done. Now, we didn't include cash in here simply because we don't have the cash data from the bank. The bank changed ownership for July, and we couldn't get the data from July. So the July report left cash information on the bank accounts and how that spread. There's also a document in here, Budget Highlights, that's some things that all of them approved in the budget, and I'd just like to give you the status of each one of those. Well, many of them have been accomplished and ready, for example, a separate one for the treasurer, this is the May report, you know, it wasn't done in May, it was done this week. The software has been purchased by the tax department. So a number of these things have already been completed and worked on, but I just want to give you the status every month of each one of those items that you approved. And then there is a summary page that I provided. If you want to make any changes in this, let me know. But hopefully you can look at the two, if you have a lot of time, you can look at the highlight page, and you can look at the summary page, and you get a good synopsis of where the village is financially. Now, the mail doesn't tell you much because the year-to-date equals the month, and so it's not going to give you a whole lot of information, but we will have a June report done this month, we'll pass that out to you in the mail, and we'll have the July report done next week, and then for the October meeting, we'll have August and September, and then we'll press on track for the rest of the year, if you didn't know. So we'll include some other information as we move on. In this report, you may see that the Police Warfare Fund was overspent simply because we didn't divide those expenses between life and forfeiture. That's a minor issue that we'll take care of administering. Other than that, any information you would like to see in these, should equal the budget, I took a little bit of time to get, to get the 29 funds down to mine, those office funds, and get them in this form. So any information you would like to see, anything additional? We changed, we took about 30 pages of sound out down to 16, and we'll keep that down further so that you can have, it's easier for you to review and look at. Any questions on the report?
And we've reduced the checking accounts as well, correct?
Reduced the checking accounts, we're working on those organizational ones.
Right.
And we'll take care of that. The banking change in July, I believe, and we're waiting for the system to run through. We're waiting for, you know, maybe two months for it to run through, sweep accounts, see how that goes. And I will be reporting to you probably later in the office report of possibly anything interesting regarding that. Any other questions?
Just a comment for Davidson. As the, as we sort of talk, these are much easier to understand, can we just make sure those get loaded on the website for the public as well?
Willing. Thank you, Nick. And that's basically just a discussion, it's not a motion. All right. You want to, you want to elaborate on the next item before I bring it up to tax levy?
We will do it.
Sure. I know I have to do a first reading, but if you want to bring, you want to talk.
Yeah, let me make some comments on this. Basically, as I, as I stated with most of you, I'm just trying to give you some general information on the tax levy itself. It explains truth and taxation, true tell of what the levels are. I think this chart is pretty important, where you can see that you're 11% of the departmental tax bill. School districts historically are about 75% of that. In addition, it gives you some history of where you're at. And again, this one is important also. It's important to note that you're a municipality that provides departmental fund. So, you actually have to add those ones in, which individuals don't have that. It's not a direct one-to-one relationship, but again, in order to compare your levy to other communities, you have to have those two in. So, it's important information to have. And there is information on how any of these is calculated, and also information on the increase in the local fund effect for this, and different properties, different liabilities.
Thank you. So, the next item is, I need a motion to approve a first reading of the annual tax levy.
So. Do we need a motion or just a first reading?
First reading.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, we need.
We don't need a motion.
You don't really need a motion.
No, okay. I just need, okay, I just need to approve the first reading of the annual tax levy. And then a roll call.
You don't, you don't, it's just.
Okay, okay.
So, it's just, it's out there available.
You announce it, and it's available to the public, and they can look at it for the next month before the next reading.
Okay. Don't do that very much.
I think it's important for people to realize. If you look at the chart he gave, and it's going to be available on the website.
Right.
A $200,000 house is a $46 increase per year. So, it's, if you look at the pie chart, a lot of people I know that have talked to me about it and tried to explain it. Not that it's real easy to read a tax bill when you get it, but it is different. But when you put it in the pie chart and all such, and so that you can actually understand it. And a lot of it's school district, and the village is a very little one. It's also important to know, like he said, compared to other communities, we do have our own police department, our own fire department, and the parks department. So, it's a little bit different than the other communities. It's, want people to realize that. And last year, we didn't do anything. So, it's, it's been a long time coming. I know it's bad, but a $200,000 house, $46, that's not a lot to me. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Robert. All right, we move on to.
Before, can you?
Oh, sorry.
I would prefer like a full reading of the page, just so, for the recording and everything, so people know, and that we're not keeping anything. Is that okay?
Sure.
You want?
Go ahead, I don't, I don't have it.
Just the cover page?
Yeah, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. No.
I thought we were reading and reading.
Okay.
We're trying not to read the whole charts, but.
No, just the cover page.
It's fast.
So, dated September 20th, 2022. To the mayor and board of trustees, regarding the property tax levy. Purpose of this memo is to respectfully request the mayor and board of trustees, review property tax levy data. All municipalities in the state of Illinois who levy a tax on real estate must file a levy with the county no later than the last Tuesday, December, for the following year's receipt. Highlighted nuances related to the property tax levy are detailed in the attached. The village board has received this information in the past, and it's important to review the data on an annual basis. The village has grown increasingly dependent on the property tax totaling 34.01% of the general fund revenue. This is a difficult year to estimate property tax receipts, given the real estate market over the past year and changing economic conditions. Given the current economic conditions, it is recommended that the village consider a property tax levy at a 4.99% increase from the previous year. Then do a more critical evaluation once all annual audits are completed and economic conditions settle. It is respectfully requested that the mayor and village board review the data and consider the recommended property tax percentage increase. This matter will be brought before the village board at the next meeting.
Thank you, Dana. I would like to request that staff start a public education campaign on tax information and kind of the breakdown. I wish I could say I made this idea myself. I didn't, Zion did. When you walked into the village hall, they had the, you know, pie chart, the breakdown of, you know, I'm sure you guys have seen our tax bill, the quarter breakdown of what we were wearing. And they had a pretty large poster board right when you walked in. So, especially those who are coming in to, you know, pay their water bills or have questions on their taxes, it's kind of nice to have that visual right in front of you, especially if you are, you know, trying to move forward with this. I would like to see, have that here.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Can we put that together, Dave and Nick? Yes, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think it's important that public know that we don't take any tax increase lightly, that, you know, and I know you said, you know, it is a small, but, you know, it is an increase, and I think it's important to be as transparent as possible, you know, and to make that clear that, you know, not taken lightly.
It'd be nice to see it on the website as well, if we can do that breakdown. So, again, it's out there in several different avenues.
We'll take care of it.
Good idea, thank you. And thank you, Trustee McCarthy, for reading that for us. I wasn't prepared for that.
That's okay.
All right. So, we move on to item number seven. Let's see, I need a motion to set aside the rules of the president and board of trustees to waive the first and second readings of ordinance, ordinance supplementing the appropriation ordinance adopted on July 19th, 2022. So, I'm going to turn it over to Nick and Dave. I know you explained it to me today, but you're the finest person, so I think I'll let yours go ahead.
Thank you. All we're trying to do here is, you have some grant money that you would like for, you did not include that in the budget until we were sure we were going to get it. I got the documents all signed off and ready for reimbursement, beginning with $1 million in grant money, finally $20,000 for public works expedition, and then $420,000, $250,000 should be swept. And the fire department will begin at $214,200, 220, 214. So, again, I want to point out that if we have $1 million in grant money for a $10,000, $7 million budget, it's astounding, because it would be your staff to do the job, and you as elected officials did. So, what this does is gives you authority to spend that. So, we have to spend it, and then we'll reverse through the state. So, again, this is, you'll be suffering any of the appropriation from time to time when you're conservatively budgeting. You just add things as they come about, and they should get around before that. But still, I get in a lot of communities, and a lot of communities have $7,000, $7 million budget, get $1 million, so that's a lot of money to get.
Right. Thank you. Any comment, Dave? Or he said it all?
He said it all, and again, and it's a good reason why, to change the appropriation.
Okay.
One moment, and this is. I just want to highlight that the state money that we're getting for Public Works and the roof, I just want to let everybody know, the persistency of the mayor contacted Springfield has paid off. How we could do it because of this persistency, that we were able to receive this money as quickly as possible for us to start before winter hits on those projects.
That was maybe my question, is there a timeline for the projects?
Right now, we're working on those timelines. The, for the public works projects and for the roof, it's a very stringent requirement, bidding requirements where we have to go out for bid again. So, we just need to make sure we're in compliance. Once we get the bids, then we're going to be at the mercy of the supply chains and also the availability of the other contractors. We're making all efforts to move forward as quickly as possible, to at least get some of the projects started for a quarter or a half. But we don't have a current timeline. Within the next few weeks, we're hoping to be able to update the village on our timelines.
Don't say quickly, because Tim's hair is growing right away. That's the problem.
As for the roof, as for the roof, we're going to explore another option as well. We're going to see what the cost difference is between a traditional roof, and we're going to see what the cost could be for a metal roof, which will, which will extend significantly the money of the roof. So, those are just other options we're exploring.
Thank you, Dave. All right. I need a roll call.
Harget?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Moshe Kier. I'm moving item four from Public Safety, Presentation Promoting Brock Stornton to Lieutenant, to the mayor's report. So, I call the chief and Brock Stornton.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Since I came here, this is my first promotion of a lieutenant since I've been here, and I thought it'd be nice to start recognizing our promotions in front of the board, and the mayor, and the residents, because we take this seriously. It's a tested position to come up. It takes hard work, it takes dedication to the community and the department to get to a promotion. So, why not do a, give him his badge in front of you guys, right? This is Brock Stornton, he's eight or nine years now. He's one of our metro employees, he's also one of our part-time village employees. And so, that worked out nicely. Brock knows what he's doing, he's very competent, and loves being here. So, unfortunately, I don't think your wife could make it tonight for this exciting moment. This is the moment you've been waiting for. I'm not going to pin it on you, because you probably don't trust me with this needle near your chest, right? So, let's go up here. Sorry, there's no good place to do this, so come on up here. And I'll give you the badge.
All right.
And thank you for your hard work.
I'll keep it quiet tonight. First night, you never know. Chief, what it takes for him to promote to lieutenant?
Yes, so, they held a test prior to my arrival here.
Right.
I'm not sure what their qualifications were to do it, but what we need to have to make sure our liability is covered here is basic fire officer class, put it on by the state fire marshal, an incident safety officer class, to make sure they're up with the safety part of it, paramedic, and certified firefighter.
So, how long does it take to accomplish that, on an average? I mean.
Yeah, it's, depending on how aggressive the person is that wants to get all that done, maybe three years.
Okay.
But nobody does it that fast, so it's quite a problem, probably like five, six years to get all that done.
How long is Brock then with the power of fire?
I think he said nine years.
Nine years, okay.
So, he came through the ranks, he's one of our own, took the full-time metro position in behalf there. So, worked out nicely.
Great, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
A couple other things I wanted to say. I just want to mention how proud I am of the accomplishments of our youth this past few months. We hope our youth continue to make great accomplishments locally and worldwide, as Rosadez has done. We had our first honorary street naming for Bill Taft. I could not have thought of a better person for this honor. Thanks to trustee Levin for leading this honor. As a community, we need to make an effort to continue to highlight the significant accomplishments made by our residents that have ultimately made Wentworth Park the great place to live as it is. I want to thank the parks and rec boards, staff, and volunteers for this year's touch truck. It was a great event, and even the weather cooperated for us to hold this event. Thanks to everyone. The grants, as Nick alluded to, I am happy to announce that the village has received final award notifications this past month, totally over $1,090,000. These funds will be used for improvements to our public works garage, the new roof at Gold Hall, new communication equipment for the fire department, and funding for traffic safety detail by the police department. I commend the staff of these departments for proactively seeking and applying for these funding opportunities to make improvements to their departments. And ultimately, improvements to the level of service we provide our residents, businesses, and visitors. And I know Dave said how, you know, how much I've contacted our grant manager in Springfield. You know, Alex Fuller has been phenomenal. I wish, whenever we did grants with Springfield, we could ask him to be our grant manager, because every time I called him, he either answered the phone, he got right back. And I kept saying, I'm very sorry about you, I don't want you to think I'm, you know, calling you every week, which I didn't, probably called twice a month. But he said, no, 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 mayor, I understand, I'll find out where, I got the numbers of your grants, I'll find out where they're at. And I swear, as soon as I got the phone, he contacted those departments and got them moving on those grants, because things always seem to move after I talk to him. Maybe it's because I said, come on up, and I'll take you out to charter fishing, I don't know. But, no, I told him to come on up sometime, and I'd take you fishing, but he'd have to pay his own way. But, but it's, you know, I just, I'd do anything for the village and Wentworth Park to get the village to grant funding and anything we can to make this, make changes in the village that people can see. I'm just, I'm just happy to our state rep, Joyce Mason, who was very instrumental in helping us with the grant for the Public Works building, and Senator Melinda Bush, who also was involved with that grant to some extent. The new roof was pretty much all, state rep Joyce Mason. We asked for $500,000, but she can always give us $250,000, so we took it. And also, the fire department, the $214,000 grant, was our congressman, Schneider, his husband. So, we've gotten help from every, every one of our elected officials. And that won't end, because I'll continue to talk to them, do whatever I can to get money for the village and Wentworth Park. So, that's basically all I have, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the village administration report. I have no reports. You have no report? Are you sure? Okay, no, no problem. All right, move on to clerk correspondence.
I have nothing.
Nothing? No old business, we'll move on to new business, committee reports, administration, and community development committee, and trustee Harget.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 2022-5 in the amount of $402,564.05. Signed.
All right, any comments on that? Is this the, the 402, of that, 173 in loan payments?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to say, the loan payments that came out of that, $173,014.98 out of that 402. 9/11 system was $54,000, the Sura back was $45,000, various capital improvement projects was $73,000. So, most of that, because $173,000 out of that 402 were loan payments. So, we're trying to spend down our debt, you know, get rid of our debts, so we're working on that. Any other comments on that, Mark? Okay, roll call, please.
Harget?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Moshe Kier.
And then the next item, no more is presenting the first reading of an ordinance amending 150.003 of municipal code with the power of modifying and modernizing building permit fees. This is what we discussed at the last meeting, this is kind of codifying that discussion. The full changes are in the packet, but the biggest thing is shifting, in many cases, from flat rates to percentages. The previous version of the ordinance, each different type of building permit had a different structure to it, so trying to simplify what the expectation is when someone is pulling a permit. But the full details is in the packet and will be available online.
Because I thought I could conclude costs as well?
Yes, of course.
Okay, the cost of.
Yeah.
No, you and I talked about that today. Any, any other comments, Hagey?
No, this, the rationale behind the revisions to this code are really based on cost of living, cost of production, and cost of serving our residents.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
No roll calls, it's the first reading. No, Brock, this is the first reading.
Okay, sorry. Move on. See, you're, you're okay. Public safety, trustee McCarthy.
Make a motion to accept a notice of state award for a grant from Illinois Public Transportation for the 2022-23 Step Grant for up to $25,954.05 and $0.56 in waived reimbursement.
Motion second. Any other comments? Brock, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Make a motion to adopt the new fire department standard operating policy and procedures.
Comments on that? Brock, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Make a motion to accept the resolution for the assistance to firefighters, grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, United States Department of Homeland Security.
Second. Any comments on that? Go ahead, I thought you were gonna have something.
Yeah, so this was an assistance firefighters grant we applied for in the winter and we're just getting it now. I'm really proud of this grant. My grant writer, Lieutenant Doug Winston, put a lot of time in on it. He's a good writer and put it in perspective, we have about a million dollar budget and this is a $200,000 grant, so 20%, that's really cool. We're gonna get portable radios to talk on, mobile radios for inside the rigs. Ours are antiquated now, out of technology, the current technology. So we're going to ensure that the product we get is gonna last for years to come and it's not gonna be outdated anytime soon, so this'll last a while. These portable radios now are actually upwards of probably six to eight, even $9,000 a piece now, so there's no way our budget can handle this kind of a purchase with all we have going on at this time, so we couldn't be happier to do this and get this award.
It's a huge safety aspect too. We don't have any bigger buildings. It's like in the bigger buildings at the base, you have to put in repeaters and stuff to enhance the signals because they're dead zones and so in our community, that would be great because there won't be a spot they can get in that they won't have to communicate unless they get knocked out or something other than that. So it's, it's great for safety. I applaud it because that's, that's, that's a really good job.
We're really excited.
When do you expect to get these radios?
From past experience of the past year, my other job, we ordered them and they were a good year or two out. Those are the supply chain issues. So we'll see, there's a national bid out for them. We'll make sure it goes through some kind of a bid process and we're at the mercy of the supply chain.
All right, okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Brock, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Public Works, very good.
Yeah.
Public Works and Recreation, trustee Marbella.
Yep, I moved to set aside the rules of president and board of trustees, the way the first and second reading of the ordinance extending the sewer recapture for another five years for Nicolowski Chumley and adopt as presented.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Basically, yeah, so this has been...
How long has this been going on?
Twenty-five years, so it's, this is the fifth time, I believe, that it's been adopted.
I remember when I was trustee.
Ninety-seven, I believe, is when it was first.
Yeah.
That was the first ordinance since I wrote. So many, just kept on the... I was hoping it would go away. If they get their money and be done, I'd like it.
Well, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? Brock, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
So I moved to set aside the rules of president and board of trustees, the way the first and second reading of the ordinance extending the water recapture for another five years for Nicolowski Chumley and to be adopted as presented.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Same thing.
Same thing, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted if somebody goes to town, they're going to get their money back, so...
Okay, Brock, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Excellent, now we move on to public comments. Anybody that would like to address the board, please provide us with your name and your address.
I don't know if this was the place to do it, but it does affect all of us as a community, so I just have a quick question. My name is Tammy Upson. I live at 302 College Avenue. House Bill 3653 passed February 2021 and goes into effect next year. It's all, it's being referred to as the Safety Act. Has everybody heard about the Safety Act?
Yes.
Okay. I've been doing a lot of digging on it and looking up who initiated the bill, who passed the bill. I'm still, I'm almost at the end of that. Has the community here, have you guys thought about doing an information session for the community to tell them what the Safety Act is, what it means, and maybe have our police officers tell us what to do to protect ourselves? I know you're limited. I know it ties the hands of our policemen as well, and I think everybody's still trying to get an understanding of it. And I mean, I signed a witness slip opposing it. Well, actually, let me, let me think of that. There's HR 0598 out there in the Illinois General Assembly, and I signed that because that's the bill to repeal the Safety Act. I looked yesterday and it doesn't look like you can sign a witness slip anymore, and there's only like 200 and some that want to repeal it, 500 and some want to keep the Safety Act. So I'm like, well, is it the criminals? You know, is it the DA's or, you know, what's going on there? So I already signed it to repeal it, and I think I saw something the other day about something else to sign it. I also know that of 102 Illinois counties, 100 were against it, two were for it. I only know that Lake County supported it, which kind of surprised me, yes. I'm assuming Cook County also was for it, but Lake County was for it. I was kind of surprised to hear that. Tim Wills County, Tim Glass, the attorney, state attorney general, I think his name is Jim Glassco, he said he has 640 criminals that will be released January 1st. 60 of them have committed murder. According to our Lake County Gazette that's been floating around, it came out of nowhere a few weeks ago, they have 32 that will be released. According to Keith Peacock, Orland Park Mayor, he says if they go in your shed, police can't do anything, they give them a ticket. And it'll be up to you to get them out of your shed. And then he hesitated. Legally, like, oh, great! So there's a lot of questions about that, but I think our community should know about it.
I think that's a great idea.
I think it's something to think about, and I don't know how far the police can do, you know, oh, grab your gun, shoot them all, or kick them in the shins. I mean, I don't really know what to do about it to be safe. It would be greatly...
I know trustee White told me something today just before the meeting.
Yeah, I'm looking at, right now, there's a lawsuit that has been filed against the Safety Act to repeal it, but the simple fact is it was unconstitutional the way they passed it, according to the DA's from Kankakee and some other suburban states.
Oh?
So I just pulled it up right now. I saw it a couple of days ago, and one of the DA's listed a whole list of things that the legislators didn't do. This should be a referendum that should go to the orders of Illinois.
Really?
That's what they stated, that they said according to the constitution of Illinois, there was a whole list of things that they listed, and so it is, it is being filed as a lawsuit right now.
Okay, well, I'll go look that up.
So that's interesting, we need to, I just pulled that up.
Well, it's all, it's all new, so then I did know about it already in March, but again, that's March 2022. This was past February 2021, we're all hunkered down in our home, wearing our masks and doing, you know, doing that, and all this was back under the table and, you know.
This is one where there is a lot of political theater on both sides.
Yep.
And trying to sit through that as a local municipality to understand and think is important. It sounds like there are also going to be trailer bills coming to try to clarify some of the things. I heard today one of the original sponsors of it saying they're still not exactly sure how some of it'll be implemented, right? So they're figuring out...
Right, straight for us.
Right, they're figuring some of that out still, so I think we have to see, you know, how, what happens with legal challenges, what happens with trailer bills, so that we have clarification for our staff, for enforcement or living within the parameters of whatever laws are in place and to help the public understand the impacts on that.
I love living in Winter Harbor, and I do want to tell you all, I think all that you do, all that you do, because I know it's a hard job, and it's probably a major job, right? It's a very hard thing to do, and I love living here and I don't really want to leave.
I can see what my family did. They went to have a five-star and bought more ammo. Too many toys.
Well, I'm not even gonna say that on camera. I have a list of things to do, practice, practice.
I think, you know, I think when you see this, a lot of this came out of basically Chicago.
Yes.
To see what happened with some of the detectives and some of the police officers that weren't coming up and up and how innocent people were put in jail. And so this is where I think it basically started from. That's what I heard from some other police chiefs. It's just an opinion, but I can see part of that being, you know, somewhat true, so... But again, I thought it was really amazing to see that some district attorneys have already filed lawsuits against the Safety Act saying it was unconstitutional.
I hope so, but I don't even know.
I don't want to put words in the chief's mouth, right? And oversimplify, but I think no matter what happens with lawsuits or trailer bills, the message is going to continue to be, see something, call the police, right?
Oh, definitely, I'll be calling.
They're gonna do everything within their power to protect and serve, right, the residents of Winter Harbor, right? So that, that doesn't all of a sudden change January 1st.
Right, now it's like, do we put no trespassing signs up? Do we put cameras up? I don't know what we can all do. Do we all, do you encourage to say a self-defense class where everybody knows how to maybe manually attack your attacker, not just throw the weapons that...
They have several of them in the area.
I know, I need to get, I need to get my, get over there and do that. So thank you, thank you for listening, thank you for letting me know I'll look that up.
I'm gonna ask our attorney about the lawsuit. I mean, are you familiar with that?
Sure.
Okay, do they, do you know if they, if it was illegal? I mean, like...
Do I? I'm not a judge.
Okay. I mean, wasn't required a court of reference?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think the lawsuit isn't gonna get them anywhere. But again, as buddy pointed out, this is a lot of political theater on both sides. There's, for every one of you, there's another one on the other side of the coin if you come in here and do it. My issue here is that the village can't take a position on a matter of political importance. So this really isn't the forum for that. Your request to have a public information session, that's appropriate. Once we know where this is going.
Right.
Until, until some of the politics settle down, you're not gonna be able to effectively...
Inform people.
Inform people of what the law turns out to be, because we don't really know what it is yet until legal challenges are resolved.
Okay, no, I know, I know, I know our policemen can't exactly...
Right.
What to do without it.
They can't, they could have better than I can.
Right, but at least you're thinking about it, or you may go forward with it when we know, when we have more information.
Thank you, Tammy.
Time may have just some to keep the benefit of Winter Harbor and the whole community, that no matter what happens, the police department's always gonna be there to help you.
Yes.
No matter, no matter what it is, they're still gonna serve you.
True.
They'll find a way to resolve your issues.
True, and I'm willing to work with them. So to do it the best way, easiest way, legal way, I don't know what the right words are, but I get these. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else? All right, we move on to unfinished business. I'll start down here, Talana Whitmore, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who came out to Touch a Truck. We had a really good turnout. We actually had a ton of trucks, probably more than we've ever had, so that was really nice. Also, we have our truck or treat on October 22nd. And then also, just a reminder, we have bingo on every Wednesday at 6:45. And also, just keep on the lookout for flyers for teen night and gym night. We actually had one of our biggest turnouts this last, I'm sure everybody just wanted their kids back out of the house and running around on Friday. And also, I've had a lot of people asking about pickleball courts, so feel free to check out the new pickleball courts. It's all set up, ready to go, and I don't think a lot of people were made of, you know, aware that they're up, so feel free to check them out.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee McCarthy?
I want to thank you, Mayor and the board for recognizing Razzle Dazzle and their accomplishments. Just what I definitely hope would happen as a parent of one of them. And as Laura mentioned, you know, I was sitting at one of the, I think the show right before they left for Einhopin and I was counting the number of girls that were in Winter Harbor. I'm like, oh, the majority of them live in Winter Harbor.
That's all.
That were announced, and I'm like, well, and some of them, other ones don't live and die either, so just clearly, so it's just great to see them. I mean, I've seen them since they were little, you know, taking my daughter to the classes on Saturday mornings, you know, every watcher, you know, drop the baton a bajillion times to this, you know, being on the world stage there is great. And I will keep everyone up to date on fundraisers for the trip next year to Liverpool, which I will be going this time, but I might have ulterior motives that I'm going along for this one next year, so I'll make sure everyone knows how, if they would like to help out with that. You want me to say this one for you?
I think you should, yeah. I'm not, I just want to make sure, make sure it doesn't conflict with the village board meetings.
Yeah, I'm really worried about that. I want to thank the police chief, Turned Long, Mayor Laura David, everyone who had a hand in, in the police contract, as well as the police union, you know, and the work that they did to come to this, you know, this agreement, you know, something I think we can really be proud of. I want to mention the Touch Truck was awesome. My kids aren't little anymore, but my nephew came and it was great to see him climbing on all the trucks. And thank the fire chief too for all the work he's doing to, you know, find ways to fund the things that were needed, you know, these grants. It's just great to see, you know, I mean, it's tough times, but, you know, you're doing everything you can, and we really appreciate that. That is it, that's the one that I'm gonna make my thoughts on.
Two, one is, yeah, when Nick presented today and the various items we had, I mean, the amount of grants coming in is, you know, a testament to persistence and a lot of work that's gone into that, and so good to see those projects moving forward, particularly the Public Works Building, you know, that's been a long time coming, and I'm so glad to see that finally get to move forward. Other thing was last month, we had one of the queens come and challenge the village, so Eva Fusen, and so representing the village in that challenge, she went around to different service groups, were trustee McCarthy and myself and some of our kids, and there were several other organizations from Orland to Harbor that sent groups out, and that was my first time going to feed my starving children and packing food, but collectively between the groups that day, we packed, what is it?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five boxes, which fed 31 kids for a year, and those were being shipped off to Somalia, so they ship, you know, all over the world, but that night we were, we were packing food and it got really competitive with all the scooping and filling and sealing and screaming when boxes are filled, right? It is a, it's a good time. My daughters came with and they've already asked, you know, are we going back? I think they want to try and beat the score, but, right, it was competitive, but, you know, special thanks to the queen for making that challenge, and thank you to Dana and everyone else who came out that day to represent and challenged the rest of us, you know, as opportunities come like that, we can get out there and see, see how many more boxes we can pack.
And a great organization.
It is, yeah, oh, it's a mountain.
How'd you get them out there to go?
Yeah, they...
They're starving children.
I know. Good job, good job to both of you. Thank you for doing that. Trustee White?
Thank you. Thank you, uh, yes, I just want to commend the Razzle Dazzle team, and, uh, the coach's story of how that all transpired was really inspirational. I think what's really neat is to see the discipline that these kids had to do that and, and to do the best, and when the coach said, if you've done your best, no matter where you came in at, you know you, you've done it, you know? And that, to me, I think is the most important, because a lot of people don't know how to lose today or win and be good at either or. Want to thank both of the chiefs for the amount of hard work, especially with the contract and then police union contract, Pop Long and Mayor, uh, Rocky with his grants, and then, you know, I think when we start the program, uh, the renovation for the Public Works Building, we need to have the crow guards come and help, if we're going to do a shovel thing, because I know how he felt, okay? And how he waited long.
That's my plan, that's my plan. I took the words out of my mouth, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he, he was a proponent of that. He said, I don't think the state will ever come through, but, you know, it's there. And so, and in my seventeen years being here, almost seventeen years on and off on the board, I've never seen that amount of grant money coming to the village of Winter Harbor at one time. So that's quite an accomplishment to the department heads, to, uh, everybody that's worked hard to get to that point. I think it's really, really great to see that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Weiss.
Trustee Redd.
Um, you know, I'd like to congratulate Razzle Dazzles, and that's just tremendous stuff. Um, I also like to say congratulations to Lieutenant Sorensen, his promotion, it's nice to see that come before the board. And, um, also like to thank everybody in the community that came out, uh, to support Bill. Um, the guy was proud.
Yeah, the solid, yeah. Smile from ear to ear, yeah, in the pictures, yeah, it's great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, he was, he sat on the pension board for a number of years, and, uh, great man, very knowledgeable, you know, comes to police, but also to pension, but, you know, he was such a, you know, outstanding trustee of pension. Hated to lose him, but, you know, you know, glad that we could do that for him. Yep. Trustee Barabala.
So, yeah, the Razzle Dazzles thing, that's, it's a, uh, it's a group of girls, I, my wife was part of that. I went to school at Dawn, she's close, and I know Laura my whole life, so I've been to events, I've been to Notre Dame, and my daughter does the event tour, I mean, I, I get drunk to all this stuff, and I don't mind, I mean, it's a good thing, these girls work hard, I try to support them with all they do, so that was, that was a major accomplishment, so I'm glad we did that for them. The touch truck, Alana gets a lot of credit for that, she worked hard on getting home. It was hard to get the vehicles on the board, but, um, I couldn't go, I had to work, but it, uh, never, it was, it was going to be weather, but it turned out good.
Yeah.
A lot of people came out. I dropped Dave off at the gym late the other day, and so it was four people, and Dave was there, and Scott and two ladies, and then he's like, I need another person, so I stayed. I usually do the teen one, but a little kid one is, is very, there's a lot of screaming, and a lot of.
You don't realize how quiet it is, how it's been since I got home.
There's a lot of stuff going on, the two of, you're looking at the clock, not that, but you're looking. Well, I just sat at the door, so I, I had to eat harder, but, but yeah, so that was very good. Um, my, I think, I think it was good, people are finally coming out, we're doing things, um, kids were all great, everybody was very respectful, they just had a lot of energy, so that was good. We're still down, uh, we'll keep on the rec part for now, but we're down, our, uh, part-time helper has a illness, so it's just, uh, Jackson and Scott, and so they're working their butts off. Um, we've had an ad out, nobody wants to fulfill the ad, I know it's some nighttime stuff because it's for Lions. Lions Call has asked, they asked us to help do food, but we can't, because they've had people do it, but it's hard, because people don't show up, and then they want, we have no way to accommodate them, so we've told them that, but maybe eventually if we get a guy to put on that part-time, um, the, the staff is working on the implementation of the new software, um, for the department, which makes the operation better, so it's the new software, so we can do stuff online, like, because people always ask about renting buildings, or doing, so we are advancing, and I know, uh, we're getting help from many directions, from multiple people that are helping to do that, so that's improving. Uh, we got a new logo, um, they're, they're probably going to improve it, but we had to get the new logo to, to get started, and to get started with everything, so it's not set in stone, right? It's, it's, it's there, but they've, they've been offered, the board has been offered to make changes or do what they want to do with it, so we're letting them do that. And at the next meeting, they talked about, I wasn't very, uh, they told me that upcoming events for twenty-three and working with the marina to get more events that way, so that's all in the works, and so they are working very hard. Um, and it's, it's a, a small group that does most of the stuff, so we're working on getting other volunteers, I know, um, the pickleball, the ladies came, um, and they, they're trying to get in the mix of stuff too, so we're trying to work that in, where other people could come help us at different events too, so we're working on that.
Just tell me.
Yep.
I'll get the girls.
Yeah, that's something to work on, and we'll get better at that. So for the Public Works, we got, um, I'm glad, and I want to thank all the department, we have great department heads, so I don't want to forget any of that. John did the, uh, we went to that, uh, for, Mr. Tap, The Hook, I call him, I called him when I was a kid, uh, him and my dad went to school with each other, he's younger than my dad, but, uh, lifelong resident, he's a good person, it was, it was, it was very joyful for him, I mean, he got a kick out of it, all his grandkids were there, his kids, neighbors, so that was good. And thanks for everybody for the grant stuff, that's awesome, John, you guys do great. Public Works, I know Kevin's been waiting for our building, and I know it's going to be a while still, so it's hard to get excited about something, and I know the guys are, but eventually it's going to come to fruition, so that we got that. Although that'll be before winter, like we want, but it's, it's going to happen soon. Our branch pickup starts in October, that's his favorite time, and our summer helper, well, we just lost our summer helper, so, because he went back to school, so we're still down a guy out there too, I mean, we've been saying, I know, we, we squeeze tight for all these budgets, but it's hard to double that with vacations and everything, and then personal time off, you know, all the stuff you get. So I, I think we do a great job. I just want people to be understanding this month, because branch pickup's hard, sometimes if we get a storm, it's Monday, Tuesday, so if we don't, it's Monday, but sometimes it's two days, which is hard when you're limited, and you've got to have so many guys on there, because it's a dangerous activity. You've got a chipper, you've got traffic, and you're pulling around and, and you're picking stuff up, so they do a great job, but I just want people to know that that's, it's not easy. Uh, days are getting shorter, it's darker in the mornings, I leave early, so just be careful, watch for people, there's people walking dogs, and, you know, I'm right by the park now, so I shield that. I used to worry always about, out by the Public Works, on the ball fields, because that's one of the areas that, when there's sports activities, but there's a lot of people crossing to go to the park that don't live on that side, so we just want to be aware of that. That's all I got, you know, like I said, we're, uh, shorthanded, but our guys are working really hard, so I hope it's appreciated in the village, so that's all I got.
Can I just chime in one thing?
Sure.
I forgot, I apologize. Um, my daughter hosted a food drive, and I really want to just have a big thank you to the staff and the office staff and David. Um, she collected a ton of food from, um, Villa Hall, and I know a lot of it came from you guys, so just a really big thank you. She ended up donating over five hundred items and two thousand dollars in cash to the food pantry, so that was really, they're, every other week, they're spending over two thousand in food.
Oh.
So, I mean, that was a whole two weeks of basically, you know, their furniture, so I think that, that really helped, but I know a lot of it came from here, so I really appreciate everyone for donating.
Uh, the.
The point turning. Okay. All right, all right. So.
Good to talk.
Can I talk real quick?
I'm sorry? Tim wants to say something.
I have Tim.
No, that, that's fine, it'll only take a couple seconds. This is regarding the, uh, development, or the proposed development at State Line and Share Row.
One-on-one share.
Pleasant Prairie, not one-on-one share row, the Pleasant Prairie.
Oh, oh, on the other side, correct.
So, we all know that there's a gas station proposed to go in there. Um, staff from Pleasant Prairie invited us up, so village administrator Dave Alakon and Sanjay, Bob and I went up.
Okay.
Along with Kirk Baumann, our, our village engineer. Talked about some things, um, I wrote this down, so I didn't want to forget it. Biggest thing was the, the efforts to look at the development and other potential developments at that intersection, which obviously involves multi-jurisdiction. You know, we have Wisconsin DOT, Illinois DOT, Lake County, the village of Winter Harbor, Kenosha County, and the village of Pleasant Prairie. All kind of go through that, and there's a lot of things that go into our concerns that, obviously, everybody got the letter that went to them. That said, our concerns and our wishes concerning First Street, since it is our road, we think it's our road. And then, as we keep going, this is not something that's going to start next month, this is absolutely still in the planning stages, um, and I anticipate more meetings with Pleasant Prairie staff as we go, and as things keep going, obviously, we'll, we'll keep you guys abreast of what's happening. But they have the property, they have the proposal, and obviously the developers are very energetic to get going, but there's a, a big process to go, and obviously, one of them is, is the traffic and the safety of the intersection.
Watershed. For the water, the watershed.
That's not really a big.
For, for the public that are here, uh, so this, we're talking about the, uh, northeast corner there of Sheraton and Russell Road, or First Street, uh, proposed development in Pleasant Prairie for a gas station, convenience store, uh, taking out the existing commercial and, and residential properties there, along that strip there.
But isn't there a gas station on the other side?
Correct, yeah.
So there would be two.
Yeah, there would be two.
There'd be a lot across the street.
The lines are.
Well, I know, if they go down half a mile, they can really just achieve if they take that.
The, the positive, the very positive of this exercise that we're going through is that it appears that Pleasant Prairie's taking a look at this development and other possible developments more on a, on a regional level, so it's going to give us an opportunity to, to kind of work out, uh, future, the future plans for that intersection, and any improvements that might be needed in that intersection on many levels, not only roadway, traffic, but also stormwater, utilities and everything else. So it's, it's a good opportunity to explore into those scenarios and see what, what, what our vision as well is for that intersection in the future.
Sure. Thank you.
It's, uh, that existing building that's on the northeast corner, is that going to be taken down?
Yeah, the, everything up to the auto body is what the new.
So the chiropractic office and all that's going to be gone?
Correct.
Okay.
It's all going to be torn out.
I thought they were just going to go behind.
It would be right at the.
They've turned your sign over.
But they have a lot of requirements to meet Pleasant Prairie's codes and ordinances.
Right.
You know, um, but they, they're going to demolish everything up to the auto body shop on the east side.
The chiropractor office is vacant.
Correct.
Oh, is it?
He's gone, yeah, he's gone.
Yeah, everything's vacant there.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, okay.
I thought I'd let you know. I was seeing them.
No, but I, I thought that, I saw the plan, I thought that building was going to be, stay there, and they were going to build to the north and the northeast of that building. I mean, that's what I took, is what I looked at, actually, uh, drawings of it, but, no, yeah, I, I think it should come down too, it's not a very nice looking building.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're flattening the entire area.
Right, okay. The meeting was pretty cordial, was just like an informational meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You didn't throw anything at them, or?
Not yet.
Future meeting.
We'll see how it plays out. No, honestly, it, it, it went fine, you know, there's a lot, they're absolutely still in the planning stages.
Yeah.
You know, the developer's got a lot of requirements to meet, um, there's other developments being talked about at that intersection, so there's traffic studies that have to get done, Wisconsin DOT is looking at it, and then, you know, if they do make changes there, who pays for it?
Right.
Is it us? Is it Lake County? I dot, WIS dot, you know, all that has to be worked out.
Yeah, we, we presently maintain First Street to the east.
Correct.
We plow it.